Good evening, everyone. Hello. Good evening. May I get your attention? Good evening. Thank you for coming tonight. My name is Stephanie Phillips. I'm the chairman of the zoning commission. Tonight, we have all of the commissioners here from Mr. Joe Paul, Linda Peppin, Mark Giuliano, Dave Fuller, and Mr. Steve Ragaskis, and of course, our zoning administrator, Jay Hibansky. We have four items on the agenda today. And I'm going to read to you, as I normally do for those who've come before, my usual administrative requirements. Good evening, Dan. Yes. I ask that you put your phones on silent, please. I really appreciate it. And if you have conversations, the hallways would be appreciated so everybody else can hear. For the record, the petitions to be heard this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post on 517 and 524. These properties were duly posted on 524, 2017. And that takes care of the administrative piece of it. And we have, let me bring back my agenda. Okay. Like I said, we have four items on the agenda tonight. And then I assume, looking at some of the faces I recognize, some people may be here for the administrative session, which will follow the close of the public hearing. The first item on the agenda is 771 815 Barnum Avenue Cut Off. Mr. Paul, do you want to begin reading that?
771 815 Barnum Avenue Cut Off. Petition of Marlow Properties LLC seeking special case approval for a self-storage facility in an MA district.
Thank you very much. This is a continuing application, so we need a motion to take it off the table.
Still moved.
By Mr. Fuller?
My second.
By Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nice to see all of you again. For the record, John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an address of 147 Broad Street in Milford, Connecticut. And I'm here tonight on behalf of Marlow Properties, which is the owner of the parcels located 771 and 815 Barnum Avenue Cut Off, which is in an MA light industrial zone. This is for the proposed self-storage facility. As we noted last month, this is a permitted use. We made significant enhancements to the building at the request of staff. And I think you know very well that we are proposing very significant enhancements to the wetlands and to stormwater quality. We left the hearing open specifically to get confirmation from your town staff that our responses to their initial set of comments were satisfactory. And so I'm going to submit two emails. One is from John Casey to Jay. It says, "Good morning, Jay. I reviewed the responses from the engineer on the above referenced project and have discussed with the floodplain administrator, who has accepted the engineer's response in a separate email. I am satisfied with the responses, and these should be made part of the commission's approval." And that's from John Casey to Jay. And there's also an email that I'll submit from your building official, Brian Donovan, to Jay. Says, "Jay, they have addressed all my concerns and meet the floodplain ordinance." So I'm going to submit those two emails, as well as, I think probably the second copy of our response memo that our engineer, Jeff Board, had completed. Jeff is not here tonight. You recall that his wife was sort of on the cusp. She finally had the baby last night. So Jeff is not here, but we'll do our best to cover for him. But I'm going to submit these for the record.
Okay. And give our best to Jeff, and congratulations.
And then, the only thing I want to note, Madam Chair, and I think we went through this last time, is that we comply in all respects with all of your special case criteria found in Section 20.2.1, A through G. I'd be happy to go through it, but I think it's self-explanatory. I think I went through it last time. But there's none of those criteria with which we do not comply. I know there's some discussion about retail. I also have a memo I'd like to submit in regard to sewer usage of our proposed uses, our proposed use as compared to typical retail. And so, understanding that the commission may have a certain vision for the future, what our use will do will allow the sewer capacity for any other future uses to use the least amount possible, so that the town can seek the development of those other nearby parcels in whatever manner it wants without, you know, our use taking up much of the sewer capacity. So I just want to submit this memo from Jeff in regard to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And without going through all of it, I just want to call your attention. On the first page, there's a comparison of self-storage to typical retail commercial. And the difference in gallons per day is 45 for a self-storage facility such as the one we're proposing, as compared to retail commercial being 392 gallons per day. So obviously, a fairly significant difference between the two types of uses. So, you know, we have, other than Jeff, we have the full team here, as well as my clients. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I'm going to open up for questions. Anybody want to go first? Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, your attorney. Appreciate you reaching out to the building officials and town engineering. My first question is, did you reach out to the veterinary professional who lives at your neighbor? Have you had any discussions since the last meeting about any of the concerns he had?
No subsequent. We had met with him back in the wintertime, before our wetlands hearing. Certainly, we had a very candid conversation at that point. I believe that our veterinarian neighbor, I mean, his concerns frankly are addressed by our application. I know that he had expressed great concern regarding the environmental quality of the rear of the property, which will be entirely cleaned up. I know that he expressed some concern regarding traffic as it comes over the hill. As we demonstrated, a self-storage facility generates the absolute least amount of traffic of any typical commercial use. So, I mean, I'm not really quite sure what more we could do to satisfy the doctor.
I kind of have a specific question, because I understand that you are going to clean up the property. You have to in order to build the facility that you're proposing to build. And I also, you know, I don't dispute the traffic study, too. It is a least intense traffic use. One of the concerns that the veterinary professional brought up was just, I guess, the access to and from the facility, and how that's in relation to his business. Would you like to add any comment to that on how it?
No. I mean, so...
Least impacted to him, or...
So, we had sort of several goals in terms of how to create access into our property. One is to be as far away from that light as possible. As I think you know, at the one extreme of our sites, we had to keep that curb open for our neighbor on the other side. Certainly, we would do whatever the commission wants us to do. But the fact is, in order for that neighbor to access the rear of his property, that curb cut has to remain open. So we tried to move the other curb cut, the main access, closer to the veterinarian. Again, there's going to be very, very little traffic coming or going out of our driveway, such that, you know, his patients, or his patients' owners, I should say, when they leave or depart the site, should not have any difficulty whatsoever. I just don't, you know, I don't think there's any traffic engineer who would indicate that there's going to be any conflicts of any kind between our customers and his.
Okay. I have just two more traffic questions and one sewer question, and I'll be all set. So, in your opinion, based on years of presenting before various planning and zoning commissions in the state of Connecticut, do you think the veterinary hospital would have a greater incidence of traffic during their hours of operation than the storage facility?
Would they have more traffic than us? Probably yes. Only because the traffic generated by a self-storage facility is so, so small. I mean, you may have, you know, several cars a day. I would imagine that the good doctor probably has patients coming and going throughout the course of the day.
And my final traffic question. Would you be open, and I'm not saying this is necessarily stipulation per se, but would you be open to having some sort of signage to discourage left-hand turns going onto Barnum Ave., exiting your facility? Because that, to me, would be the more dangerous of the two turns.
Frankly, I would have to ask my client. I don't think it's warranted to restrict it to right turns only. I mean, clearly, I think some of our customers would want to get back toward the center of town. I think there's adequate site distance, you know. So I don't think it's really necessary, frankly.
And then my final question is with sewer, if I'm, usage. So if I'm reading this correctly, a self-storage facility at the employment levels that you propose, you're looking at something that's not something about 1/10 to 1/9 less intense than your typical retail facility of a similar size?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's all the questions I have, Madam Chair.
Is that good?
Oh, yeah. I'm all set. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Giuliano, or Mr. Paul, you want to go next?
Yes, thanks, Madam Chair. Just a couple of points of clarification on some of the documentation. I guess the first question is, has there been any modifications to the exterior part of the building since the last meeting we had here?
No. From the time we submitted until we got to our last meeting, there were significant changes, but no other changes from the last meeting until tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Also, comment made regarding blasting activities. Because it says here, blasting activities must be coordinated with the fire marshal of the town of Stratford, as well as any other applicable town department. It was testified last time we met here that there was going to be no blasting.
That's correct.
Has that changed?
That has not changed. And part of the confusion was, from the time we submitted our wetland application until we are here at the last meeting, additional geotech studies have been performed to determine that we did not have to blast. So while it was an open question when we were at the wetland meeting, it is confirmed that we do not need to blast now.
And another point of clarification I need is, and this might be for Jay more than anybody else, but it looks like if the authorize is not complete on or before March 9th of 2022, said activity shall cease, and if not previously revoked or specifically renewed or extended, this permit shall be null and void. Does that also mean that they lose their performance bond in this case as well? And if so, are you aware of that?
So are you asking that if the application is approved and the project is not, doesn't get its building permits or whatever by the termination date, is the performance bond returned?
Is the performance bond returned, or is that forfeited?
I don't believe that they're submitting a performance bond currently. I don't think there was anything...
Yeah, there is.
Is there?
Performance bond. The committee shall submit a cash performance bond in the amount of $55,770.70.
Is that from the wetlands? Is that from conservation?
Yes.
Okay. So that would be through the conservation department. I don't know. I don't want to speak for their office. My guess is that... Hmm. No, I'm not sure. I don't want to, I can't commit. I'm not sure. There would be a question for the conservation.
Just out of courtesy, I think you should know whether or not that's true.
I can assure you that if this commission approves it, it will be constructed well before that time period.
Okay. And one final clarification I need is regarding the comment regarding no irreversible or irretrievable losses of wetlands or watercourses are proposed.
That's true.
However, if there's any issues with any irreversible or losses to the wetland or impact, you stand prepared to remediate whatever occurs.
Of course, yeah. And it's part of the purpose of the bond as well, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. No more questions.
Mr. Paul, do you recall if you were here for the first application, the first presentation for this property? You were?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, I wasn't sure.
Did I forget something?
No, no, no. Just wanted to make sure that we're doing everything right. Good.
And I can assure you, everybody who was here tonight was here at the last meeting.
Excellent.
I do my own checking.
Usually, I take the notes and I overlook that. Okay. Moving on. Mr. Giuliano, any comment?
Sure. You want to go, or? Go ahead. Yeah. Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
All right. Being that we were all here the last time, now that you mentioned that, your neighbor was here. Do you think that you should talk to your neighbor again? Or, let me rephrase that. Do you think your neighbor's happy or unhappy?
Which neighbor?
You only have the one right now.
Well, no. I mean, so there's a building on either side. This one is the veterinarian.
One that's occupant right now.
The veterinarian. Yes, as I said, we spoke to the veterinarian last, I think, it was the day after the snow started, either January or February. And we had a very nice conversation. And I think he was appreciative of the vast amount of work that we're proposing to do within the wetlands. I would hazard a guess to say that frankly, probably no matter what we proposed, you know, he would offer comments on it. But, you know, he mentioned a lot of things. He didn't necessarily say he didn't want this proposal. There's always going to be a curb cut onto our property to be utilized. So whether it's five feet, or 10 feet, or 20 feet, there's always going to be a curb cut onto our property. DOT wants it as far from that light as possible. And in terms of overall, first of all, I don't think there's going to be any impacts to this business. Any other business, other than what we're proposing, is going to have a more significant impact than what we're proposing.
Right. I'm not anti-economic development, but from what I saw when he was here, would you say that maybe you should go talk to him one more time, and maybe you people could talk some more about some of his issues? Because he was up here quite lengthy.
Frankly, I don't know what more we could do, because, I mean...
We can give you the tapes, and you can reread it.
Believe me, I...
I'm just saying, because I didn't get that warm, fuzzy feeling from him. I mean, he does want it, but he has issues with it. And I think that should be, because that's your only neighbor right now.
And I would tell you, Mr. Giuliano, when we met with him and heard everything he said to you last month, when we met with him privately, we heard him say everything he said identically, nearly identically, to the wetland commission, and he told you, I would say to you that many of the things he said were positive in our favor. I think that the only thing that he was concerned about was the fact that there might, there's going to be a curb cut near his driveway, but any other use is going to generate more traffic than the one we proposed. You know, if I thought that it would be fruitful to me with neighbors, and I always advise clients to do that, which is why we met with the doctor in the first place. But in this case, I just don't know that there's anything we could do to satisfy him, because frankly, some of his comments were inconsistent with one another.
Okay. Well, we still haven't admitted on that after this. And then, just my last other point, too, is, all the way over to your north over there where the go-kart track is, when you come out of there, you can only make a right-hand turn. So why wouldn't we want to keep that up where this storage facility is going?
So, what's the question? I'm sorry.
Well, why wouldn't we keep that up? It's only a right-hand turn out of there from the other end where the go-kart place is, okay? There's a sign there, only right turn. I mean, cutting across Barnum Ave. over there, especially coming up over the hill. And we don't have no traffic, no traffic study on this, right? Just what our own town said with the one little one-liner?
I'm sorry.
Right? No traffic study? Wasn't presented? Does it need to be?
I mean, in fact, the mayor said there was a small grocer there. That grocer would have generated more traffic than we are. And we are closing a number of curb cuts. That site, overall, will operate far more efficiently, far more safely than it ever operated when those buildings were in use, with this multitude of curb cuts and people being able to come and go through a variety of means.
Yeah, I'm familiar with your business over there. I've seen quite a few of them. I might even worked on quite a few of them. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Okay. Ms. Peppin?
No question.
Mr. Ragaskis?
I just have one question. It seems to me, you know, you certainly would be right from all logical thinking that there's very little traffic generated at a facility like this, probably just a few cars a day, except for on weekends. I would think that on weekends, you might have a good percentage of people that have things stored there going.
Yeah, I mean, certainly, I don't think, I think that's common sense, that you would likely have more traffic on the weekend. As with, you know, most other uses. But again, a comparison of this use to nearly any other use, restaurant, retail, office, medical office, veterinarians, health clinics, drugstores, pales in comparison.
Right. And then, when you're talking about the problems with Dr. Piper and Barnum Animal Hospital, his concerns, you do talk about the curb cut a lot, but he was, at least my notes that I've got from when he spoke to us, he was very concerned about the environmental effects, which I know you're going to do a solid cleanup, and you're going to have to, to get the final approval from, you know, permits. But he was mentioning a floodplain issue, that there...
And that has been fully vetted by your own staff.
Okay.
And the one thing I would say about the doctor is this. I believe that he is an ardent environmentalist. And if he is, and I think that he is, I think he should embrace this project, because otherwise, that area will never get cleaned up. Not only the wetlands, but also the stormwater that is reaching those wetlands currently. Because right now, it sheet flows from Barnum Ave. down the hill, through all the debris, through all the machinery, and into the wetlands and watercourses. So I would say that my memory of his testimony, both to us personally, and at wetlands, and before this commission, was that he was laudatory of our application from an environmental perspective. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any real questions. I have more comments. And I think my concerns were expressed even the last time. And I still haven't heard anything that really changes my concerns. This property, although it's compliant with our regulations, and you certainly have satisfied getting the engineering report to supplement the astounding work that you have done to address the flooding issues, I do think there's some issues that are not resolved. And I think, Mr. Piper, your neighbor may have addressed some of those. But nevertheless, my main issue isn't so much the traffic or even the sewer output. My main concern is, is that when we envisioned this property being developed, we had a different purpose in mind. This is a significant building. It will take up most of the frontage on that part of the Barnum Ave., which would be an ideal location for some of the buildings and some of the projects that we've been trying to encourage in town, particularly TOD. We struggle with TOD in areas that we're not thrilled about. But here, this is an area right in the center of town that would be perfect. I know you have a letter from the Economic Development Director stating that they support this project, and it's basically fine with them. I haven't seen any information that dissuades me from feeling that there is a better purpose that this town could generate, both from the influx of people who could benefit the retail establishment, a better tax base. I understand you have three employees. That's nice. But the tax base would still be smaller, since it's really a warehouse. I'm still looking for something that says, "We really can't do anything else with this property, and therefore, it should be left to just being a warehouse."
Madam Chair, you have decades of evidence as to why this is a permitted use, and why you're not getting a TOD, or not getting a retail, or you're not getting a restaurant, because no one has applied. No one has applied, first of all, we're in an industrial zone. And so, none of those uses that you've indicated are permitted in this zone. But if that property was crying out to be utilized in that manner, I promise you, a smart and savvy developer would have been before you, years ago, saying, "I see a higher and better purpose for this than industrial. I can see, I can envision a retailer, commercial, or restaurant use for the site. And therefore, I would want, I'm asking you to change the zone from industrial to something else." No one's done that. And there's a reason why no one's done that. It's too hard. You have a very difficult topography issue to contend with. You have a very expensive wetland remediation to clean up. You have a sewer issue. There is a traffic concern, as we've heard, both from the doctor and from commission members. You know, sometimes properties become what they're to become, what they want to be, because there's no other use for them. Now, perhaps if there were a true conservative effort, you know, on the part of the town to try to generate interest, but I'm telling you, I've done this for many, many years. Developers are looking for sites where they can bring something new and interesting, and frankly, you know, make a profit. If there was an opportunity on this site to do something that you suggest, I promise you, they would have done so. They would have asked for a change of zone. Zone changes and right changes are a fairly commonplace thing. I don't know how common they are in Stratford. But last month, you had a zone change to allow, you know, a, perhaps, a restaurant with a drive-through. That was the developer, who saw an opportunity, who found a niche, and said, "You know what? This could be a good location for Starbucks or other type of uses." No one has done that here. And there's a reason why. That property is not situated in such a way that's conducive to those uses.
I will respond only to this, not to debate it. I recognize that that property has been untouched for many years. I believe it's the town's fault that they have not marketed that property, and that's on us. But our new zoning regulations, the TOD, those are fairly new. We're still learning some of the limits and opportunities that come along with it. As such, what you've also mentioned is the fact that we are looking at changing our zoning regulations and applying some opportunities that weren't there before. And yes, I do agree that if the town actually did market the property and made the effort, it would be the kind of property that would develop very much the way our neighboring towns like Milford and even Shelton has done with some of their downtown areas. It's a concern that I have. And I'll leave it like that.
And the last thing I would say is, nothing that we're doing is going to in any way deter the ability of that area to become what you envision, if in fact, there are developers out there who want to take that on.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Is there any other questions from the commissioners?
I have a clarification question. To my understanding, and this is either directed at staff or to petitioner's representation, that this is not a TOD application. This is not in the TOD. This is utilizing the MA district and light industrial zone regulations. Am I mistaken here?
We are in a light industrial zone, warehouse, and self-storage is a permitted use in that zone.
No, thank you. That's the only question I have.
Mr. Giuliano?
I have a small clarification. The end building right now is being sold. So the building right next to the go-kart place is in sale right now. So, other than this, the other one is. And from what I've been doing some investigation on, there has been builders in that strip over there trying to buy those places out that are left over there. So...
But the applicant is, and I will give him acknowledging that he is correct, under our permitted uses right now, as an industrial zone...
Correct.
He fits within those parameters. It is on us that we should look at changing those zoning regulations and expanding that. It's not this applicant's responsibility. He has done what he is supposed to do within the jurisdictions that he has offered.
Oh, yeah, absolutely correct. But I just want to make it known that some of those buildings, one is already in the process, and builders are looking at those.
They are looking at them, yes.
And that has been my biggest repeat all the time, to start getting that developed over there.
Correct. Mr. Fuller?
Point of order. Discussion of another property that's not part of this petition is irrelevant.
Correct. But he was saying that...
Okay. So we don't get sidetracked. Is there any other question? Okay, so we don't get sidetracked. Is there any other questions from the commissioners? Okay, Mr. Paul?
I just wanted to make a comment that the work effort and the cleanup that you're doing as part of this project is to be commended, though. You have gone in there, the place doesn't look attractive today. What you're going to do is going to be a great thing. We just have to get through some of these other issues.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good. Any other questions? Good. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public for comment. Okay. Would anybody like to come forward in support of this application? Anybody would like to speak in support? All right. Would anybody like to speak in opposition to this application? Opposition, or even a comment? Anybody want to make a comment? Seeing that there is no comments or questions, any last statements? Otherwise, I'll add motion for it to be tabled.
I have nothing further, Madam Chair, and I thank you all for your int-.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Closed. Yeah, to close the, close the public hearing, yeah. Do you like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to close the-
Mr. Fuller?
Petition for, pardon me, let me get the address correct here. 771-815 Barnum Ave. Cut-off, Merrill Properties LLC.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pepin?
I second.
Second by Ms. Pepin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We're going to move on to the next property. Ms. Pepin, would you like to read it? Number two, the text amendment?
Text amendment. Petition of Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to amend 3.26 regarding carnivals, fairs, and similar events.
Thank you very much. Let me give you, for those who are just here to observe, this particular text amendment is actually amendment to ourselves that allows us to give the authority to the zoning administration, in this case, Mr. Herbansky, to make decisions on whether or not carnival shows and fairs and sidewalk sales require an approval before the zoning commission. If, in his opinion, they are standard functions that we've done before and nothing out of the ordinary, it allows Mr. Herbansky to approve them and move that application forward. And in doing so, make it easier on the resident and even the business if they want to do a carnival, or show, or sidewalk sale, bake sale, car wash, anything that they might see. So I'm going to open this up. This is the formal hearing. Any questions from our commissioners?
It's just more for just public consumption, public information.
Please.
Historically in the past, this is when Jay's predecessor, Gary Lorenson, was in office. He would kind of-
Correct.
If, if he knew there was going to be a commission meeting before the drop deadline for these sorts of events, he would bring them to the admin session, unless if they were really tiny. So it's really, it just looks like a way just to codify it this way, zoning administrators not getting caught up breaking the policy. But also, we've also legislated in here that the administrator has an out. He can go, he or she, whoever the zoning administrator is at that time, can refer back to the commission for new petitions, ones about the case study or historic background, or ones that are more intense in use. So I think it's, I think it's just a good way to codify the zoning book, to make it consistent.
It does. Any other comment? Ms. Pepin?
No, I agree with Commissioner Fuller.
Okay, Mr. Herbansky?
I just wanted to add that we did receive some comments from the town attorney's office suggesting some minor tweaks in the language. I thought, I believe everyone received them. I know we got them after our packet went out. But if you didn't receive them, I'd be happy to hand them out to you.
I think it'd just be good for, just for the public hearing purposes, to have it on record for either you or to Attorney Florick, just to, kind of, just to summarize what the suggestion-
As Jay said, I have it, Jay. As Jay said, it was just meant to tweak the language a little bit. I don't have a problem, and I don't think the law has a problem with you delegating the authority to Jay in order to save time on your end of it. Most of these things are mundane. The danger, though, from the standpoint of an illegality, is that there are not appropriate standards for Jay to base his decision on. In fact, that there are not appropriate standards for the commission to base its decision on. So the language changes that I suggested were simply to make it mandatory that Jay, in his decision-making, consider certain criteria to determine that granting this permit would not have an injurious effect on the, on the neighborhood or the citizens of, of the town. Right now, the language tends to, toward mandatory, but not really. It says, "Particular attention shall be paid to A B C."
Would you like, would you like me to read it?
The present language?
Your suggested language.
Yeah. That would be a good idea.
Make it easier. "The planning and zoning administrator or zoning commission shall approve an application under this section if it is found that the subject of the request will not have an inverse impact on the health, safety, or welfare of the public. After consideration of parking, length of the event, hours of operation, effect upon the surrounding neighborhoods, noise, noise level, and air pollution," the administrator shall have the ability to make a-
Right. So, and that pertains not only to the administrator, but to you, if he brings it to you, because he's got the discretion under the regulation to not make the decision, but to bring it to you. It's just to make mandatory consideration of certain standards.
Excellent. So we should make a recommendation to include this as part of, I'm sorry, Mr. Fuller, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah, and Attorney Florick brings up a very interesting question about defining some standards, or again, to codify some standards. And I guess the question would be to the commission is, are there any other standards we should consider before we pass a regulation, maybe proposed, I don't want to say density, it's not, density is not really, but the number of people that would attend the event might also trigger some sort of review process or some sort of standard we wouldn't want to do. The carnival down by 99 in LA Fitness is a much different sized event than a little art sale, you know, in Paradise Greens Alley, or down in Stratford Center. Those are very different events, of very different sorts of traffic, and both, not just traffic at the event, but traffic caused by the event on the surrounding streets as well. So I don't know if there's any other standards we should consider before we make an official vote on this.
My only comment back is, I'm sure that we could come up with 25 or 26 things to think about. The overall phrase that we have in our regulation is, "Under the consideration in, of the zoning administration's purview." That is part of what we look to our zoning administration to consider, rather than us laying down every single dot that they should look at. That's part of their job. We certainly can list and probably spend a whole listing of 26 things or more that we could consider, but I'd like to think that we've hit the major points of it that allows the zoning administrator to use some judgment.
That's precisely what I'm trying to get. There's another major standard that we should support into, codify into code. This way, we do have a checklist, whether it's zoning administrator or zoning commission, when we're looking at this. There's also a lot of sub and smaller stuff, but the big, you know, the big three, the big five, or big seven, whatever it might be, that those are satisfied. It's like special cases, kind of like the opposite of this. That's like our Uber review, if you will, where we have to go through characteristic of the neighborhood, noxious owners. There is a very specific list of definitions we have to consider as special case.
Would you be satisfied, there's 12 that are listed here. Is there a way, Mr. Florick, that we can just capture everything else and put it under a language that allows the zoning administrator just to simply use his judgment in addition to those 12 items that we identified?
I actually thought that the language, other than the fact that it didn't make mandatory anybody's consideration of those factors, I thought that the factors were pretty all-encompassing with respect to what has to be decided. Remember, this is not like a special case which is going to be there for a lengthy period of time. This is a special event which presumably is going to be there for a few hours. And so, I thought that the language was, was, was fine the way it was. Now, if you want to take Commissioner Fuller's suggestion and incorporate by reference those factors, I don't think that would be out of line either. That would be a good shorthand way to do it if you're more comfortable with that.
Mr. Herbansky had some thoughts. Want to add to it?
I was just going to add that every single category that we have listed here as the criteria is essentially moderate, we are not the final say. This could go, the fire marshal reviews this, the police department, the health department. We can say yes, and they can say no. So they're, they're actually covering, every department covers these exact items as well. So, you know, I feel like they are pretty comprehensive for what we should be looking at or what I should be looking at.
Give one sec. Okay, Mr. Paul had his hand up. I'm sorry. Then, Ms. Pepin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm not a lawyer, but I would like to maybe throw this out, because I like the idea of streamlining the process and giving our planning administrators some autonomy in making these decisions. Why don't we just add a caveat that says that we're going to leave the planning commission, the planning administrator reserves the right to request a zoning commission hearing at any time they deem necessary. Then at least he's covered, so he doesn't feel like he's making a decision alone.
That's actually in the, the-
That actually is in there.
Part of the text that I did not suggest changing, so-
Okay, then I'm fine with that, then.
He has the discretion to say, "You know what? This may be a little bit above what I want to get involved in. Let me refer this over to the commission."
Then I'm fine. Ms. Pepin?
The wording that Attorney Florick kind of tweaked a little said something to the effect of the safety of the town of Stratford, or the people of the town.
Yeah.
Safety, safety or welfare of the public.
Yeah.
I think that would entail, you know, how big it is, how small it is, you know, traffic was. That that would, that would include that, I would think.
I'll just finalize. This is, Mr. Herbansky, the planning and zoning is just one of six departments that still have to sign off on any one of these applications. That includes the police department, building department, fire, engineering, health department, zoning, and at times, recreation. Each of them looking at it from their special viewpoint of what they need to mandate. We're not the final say. Any other questions? Mr. Herbansky?
Just a few final comments. We did receive staff comments from the Connecticut Department of Energy Environmental Protection. They had no concerns with the proposed text amendment. We received staff comments from the Metropolitan Council of Governments. They determined that this was not a regionally significant amendment, regulations. And lastly, we did receive a favorable recommendation from the Stratford Planning Commission to approve the rec, the text amendment based on the fact that the proposed zone change, I'm sorry, proposed text amendment is consistent with the town of Stratford's 2013 planning constitution. That's it.
Okay, if there's no more, Mr.-
No more comments.
Okay. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public, of which to have some comment on. If anybody would like to speak in favor of this application, please, you're welcome to come forward at this time. If anybody would like to speak in opposition, opposed to this application, please, come forward, or even if you just have a comment. It's an exciting night tonight. With that being said, I'd like to motion to, like a motion to close this.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to close the text amendment.
Second by Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. Okay, well, we're, well, Mr. Knott is getting ready. The third application, Mr. Giuliano, do you want to read?
Absolutely. 2720 and 2740 Broadbridge Avenue, petition of ABC Nursery LLC seeking special case approval for the expansion in site work for a private school in a RS3 district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Knott. Whenever you're ready.
Evening, Madam Chair, woman, Commissioner Pippen, Madam Secretary, members of the commission, Mr. Herbansky. My name is Barry Knott. I'm a lawyer with the firm of Knott, Knott &amp; Dunn with offices at 1656 Main Street in Stratford. I'm here this evening on behalf of ABC Nursery LLC, doing business as the ABC Childcare Center at 2740 Broadbridge Avenue, Stratford, the sole member of which is Richard Pantano, who sits behind me in the first row here. At this time, I'd like to submit the certificates of mailing and make reference to a folder of exhibits which I have just handed to each of you, to which I'll be making reference during the course of my presentation. The first seven of which are photographs of the ABC Nursery. Exhibit one, exhibit two, and exhibit three are photographs of the ABC Nursery taken from Broadbridge Avenue. If you look at exhibit three, you'll see a white house to the right of the existing ABC Nursery building. That building has been purchased by ABC Nursery, and that property, that, that house has since been raised, and that property is part of the application that is before you this evening. Exhibits four, five are photographs of the existing rear of the ABC Nursery. Show you what goes on back there for the kids. Excuse me. And exhibit six is a photo of the old house that I just mentioned. Exhibit seven is a photo of the rear yard of the old house. This is an application for special case approval in order to allow the applicant to expand an existing private nursery school in an RS3 zone. A private school is a permitted use in a residential zone, subject to special case approval, and we're asking for special case approval tonight. Now, I want to reference exhibit eight, which is the site plan, revised site plan of what we're talking about here. And the existing ABC Nursery building, the white building that you saw in photos one, two, and three, is to the left, and you can see it's the one, it's identified as 2740, one-story building, 2,400 square feet. The area that's in gray on exhibit eight is the area of the proposed new addition, and that will be attached to the right of the existing building. And then there is a brand-new parking lot to the right of the building, which parking lot has 14 parking spaces. In addition to that, there are six parking spaces on the left side of the building, and there are seven parking spaces in front of the building, for a total of 27 parking spaces. Now, that site plan that I just made reference to incorporates some changes that John Casey had asked us to make to the site plan. He also asked us to make some drainage modifications. My engineer, Jim Swift, is here this evening to answer any questions. Suffice to say that he made the modifications that John Casey was looking for. John has sent an email to Jay indicating that he has reviewed our changes, and I'll talk a little bit more about them in a moment. Now, as you can see from this plan, my client is seeking to expand the first floor of the existing school building by 1,252 square feet. He will also add a substantial parking lot to the side of the building in the area where the old house at 2720 Broadbridge Avenue currently sits, increasing the number of available parking spaces to 27. These 27 parking spaces include 20 spaces which are located completely on my client's property, of which six are located on the north side of the existing structure, and seven spaces are located in front of the building, all seven of which encroach slightly off my client's property into the town right-of-way on Broadbridge Avenue. You can see from the site plan that there is a significant area between my client's front property line and the existing curb separating my client's property from- front property line and the existing curb separating my client's property from Broadbridge Avenue. This area has been used by my client for ingress and egress to and from his property and for parking since the business opened in nineteen sixty-five. Now, I want to tell you a little bit about ABC Nursery. This school was started in nineteen sixty-five by Rick's mother, Rose Pimpanelli. The existing building was constructed at that time specifically to be used as a school. Rick became involved in the business approximately ten years ago and has been operating it exclusively with his staff since his mother's retirement a few years ago. ABC is a state-licensed childcare center authorized to care for up to seventy-six children ages six weeks to five years. I mean, seventy-six of them. I don't know how they do that. This facility is one of the oldest licensed childcare facilities in the state of Connecticut. With this new addition, ABC will be able to increase its authorized population from seventy-six children to eighty-four children. So, even though we're talking about a twelve-hundred-and-forty-square-foot addition, the number of additional children is only going to be eight. ABC's hours of operation are from six-thirty a.m. to six p.m., Monday through Friday. The facility is closed on Saturday and Sunday. There are currently eleven full-time employees. These include a director, an assistant director, nine teachers. These full-time employees work eight hours a day in staggered shifts starting at six-thirty in the morning, with individual full-time employees arriving and departing approximately one-half hour apart from each other. There are eighteen part-time employees who work four-hour shifts, also staggered throughout the day. A nurse comes in two days a week to review medical records, give shots, monitor allergies, and inventory medical supplies. An increase in children from seventy-six to eighty-four will require the hiring of two more full-time employees. Now, I want to make reference to exhibit nine, which is the floor plan of the proposed facility, and I want to introduce Rick Pantano, the owner of ABC, who will take you through the floor plan and how this facility will operate once this expansion takes place. Rick?
Hi, my name is Rick Pantano, three ninety-two Castle Drive in Stratford. Thank you for hearing our application. I appreciate it. Okay, as, excuse me, my glasses are a little foggy. You have our diagram in front of you, and you can see where the parents will be coming in from the parking lot, and they will enter the first door they enter. That's going to be our new office area, which will be double the size than it is now. Parents will sign in there and then proceed to their respective classrooms. When they go down the hall there, on the right-hand side will be our pre, our new pre-K class, which will be close to seven hundred square feet, and houses about twenty pre-K children. From there, we have two toddler classrooms going down the hallway to the right, two infant classrooms on the left, and also another infant classroom, which was room six, that will be situated there. So, the flow will be great, and it'll be very convenient for the parents. And the reason why the increase is only eight is because we are eliminating two classrooms, and those classrooms will be absorbed into other classrooms and making them bigger, which will be much better for the children and the staff. We're also putting in a conference/lunchroom. We are mandated by the state to have continuing ed every year. It's very important, and this will now enable us to have more in-house continuing ed for our teachers. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. You're welcome, there. All right, parking is not now and will not become a problem. There are more than adequate parking spaces on the site for each of the full-time employees. The parents dropping off their children arrive at staggered times between six-thirty a.m. and ten a.m. and pick up the children also at staggered times between three p.m. and six p.m. The parents use the seven spaces in front of the building as a drop-off and pick-up location. The facility's website is at www.ABCChildCareCenter.com, and if you were to click on the Facebook link on that website, you will see the extraordinarily favorable comments ABC receives from the families of its students. It's remarkable, the comments that they receive from the families that send their kids to that, to this school. Now, I want to discuss the administrative comments. Fire Department, the Engineering Department had no comment. Lieutenant Gugliotti of the Stratford Police Department commented that after viewing the plans, I do not see any immediate concerns. Maureen Whalen at the Health Department points out, "The state of Connecticut Office of Early Childhood is the agency that licenses preschool and daycare centers. I have no objection to the concept." As I mentioned above, the facility is already licensed through this same state office for seventy-six children, and my client will be seeking permission from the state to increase that limit to eighty-four children once these improvements have been approved. John Casey had sent an email to our engineer, Jim Swift, asking Jim to modify his site plan and separate the stormwater effluent from the site into two categories of flow, one to the back of the property and one to the front of the property. Jim modified our drainage plan to accommodate this suggestion, and John, as I indicated earlier, John Casey emailed Jay today the following. "The revised strategy will direct more of the water away from the rear portion of the lot and increase gallery storage so there is no net increase to the one-hundred-year storm level. After looking at the strategy, I had also discussed about separating the galleries so there is less concentration at the rear and roof and parking area directed to the street would also contain galleries. Approval should be subject to a final design plan and calculations demonstrating the goals of the drainage design. Obviously, my client has no objection to such a condition of approval, and I hereby stipulate that we will submit a drainage plan to John Casey that will satisfy in all respect John Casey's concerns regarding drainage. We can accommodate whatever he wants. That is not a problem." Jay points out in his comments that on February seventh, two thousand seventeen, this applicant received approvals for variances in conjunction with this proposed development, and that this special case application tonight is the next step in the approval process prior to our applying for building permits. Jay also states that many of the concerns of his office were addressed during the Board of Zoning Appeals approval process, and that the BZA had stipulated the following conditions of approval. One, the outdoor PA sound system shall be removed. That has already been removed. Two, mature eight-foot-tall arborvitae shall be planted where indicated on the landscaping plan presented to the board on February seventh, two thousand seventeen. Exhibit ten is a copy of our landscape plan, and you can see all the way down the right-hand side of the property and across the back of the parking lot, we've got the eight-foot-tall arborvitae shown that this stipulation calls for. Three, a full-size landscape plan shall be submitted to the Office of Planning and Zoning prior to applying for the permits. That is exhibit ten. And the applicant shall not apply for any permits until the Office of Planning and Zoning has received confirmation from the Conservation Administrator that all approvals are in place for the proposed development. Jay goes on to point out in his comments that the Conservation Administrator has already confirmed that the proposed work is not under the jurisdiction of the wetlands regulations or located within any wetland review area. Jay goes on to say that the subject application's proposed intensity appears to be relatively harmonious with existing neighborhood development. While the surrounding character is primarily residential, the proposed use is somewhat compatible as schools are generally located within close proximity to residential neighborhoods. Lastly, the proposed use does not appear to pose any safety or quality of life issues as long as the BZA conditions of approval are followed strictly. Obviously, my client intends to comply with the BZA conditions of approval, and I hereby stipulate to that fact. As I said, exhibit ten was the plan that reflects the BZA's landscape stipulation, and it includes the eight-foot-high arborvitae as well as the addition of two three-inch-caliber shade trees, shade trees, one to the right of the entrance driveway and one to the rear of the parking lot at the southwest corner. Now, I want to discuss briefly the special case approval criteria that's set forth in section twenty-point-two-point-one of your zoning regulations. The first is that the proposed use shall be in conformance with all requirements of the district. It's a residential zone, schools are permitted uses in a residential zone. Two, the location, size, and intensity shall be compatible and harmonious in relation to the size of the property. We've got more than adequate parking, the building is not too big, we still have a big, beautiful backyard for the kids to be able to play, so we comply there. The proposed use shall be in conformance with the town plan of development. Residential and school use is consistent with the town plan of development. The design location specific details should not adversely affect safety in the street nor increased traffic congestion. The traffic, Lieutenant Gugliotti, the traffic officer, has indicated that he does not have any problem with this application. The emission of noise, light, smoke, odor, gas, dust, or vibration shall not adversely affect land, water, or air quality. Obviously, this use is not something that is environmentally prejudicial. The proposed use shall not adversely affect tax valuation of neighboring properties. This facility, the elimination of that white house that was next door is going to add greatly to the market value of properties in that area. That property had been under foreclosure, it was vacant for years, it was overgrown, it was a blight on the neighborhood. And the proposed use shall not create any fire or police hazards. Once again, the Fire Department, the Police Department had no problem with that. This application represents a valid request for a worthwhile cause. If you were to look at ABC's website and the Facebook link which I mentioned, you would see that this facility provides needed and loving care for so many families in our area, and I would request its approval. And at this time, I'd like to ask those persons in the audience who are in favor of this application to please stand up. I'm seeing fifteen, Madam Chair, women. Thank you, that is.
Duly noted.
That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Mr. Knott, are you done? Can I open it up for questions?
I'm open.
Okay, I'd like to open it up, Ms. Peppin.
I have one question. Is my microphone on? Oh, I guess it is. Will the, will the schools still be in progress during the renovations, or are they planning to close for a while?
Rick Pantano, Castle Drive, Stratford. Yes, we will be open.
Oh, okay. And there doesn't seem to be any problem with construction and the children and all?
Now, we plan to start construction in the fall, in the winter, most children inside during that time.
Okay. That's all I have right now.
Any other questions? Mr. Paul?
Yes, Madam Chair. Question regarding the capacity. What's the total capacity going to be for this facility now?
Eighty-four. And now it's seventy-six, it will be eighty-four.
Eighty-four. And could you talk to me about any security that's being included in this facility?
I'm sorry?
Any security being provided in a way of protecting the children regarding eighty-four students in one building? Are we doing anything from a security perspective?
We have a lock key pad to gain entry, and all the parents have the code, otherwise you can't come in.
Thank you. No more questions.
Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Attorney Knott. My understanding is that the State Department of Education is the primary oversight board that grants licensing and permits and regulates how professionals should be certified in a daycare facility. So, if, I just want to make sure I understand this correctly, that they look like that they're, the State Department of Education is okay with this, so it's already gone through some vetting process with the State Department of Education.
They have very strict criteria for approval as far as the number of children are concerned.
Yeah, I imagine there's pupil per.
There's a strict number of square feet, of classroom space, it has to be available per child, otherwise, and then they come and they inspect these facilities frequently, and they're very strict as far as the inspection criteria is concerned.
Yeah, I imagine not just physical space, but also professional staff per student or pupil ratio as well.
That's right.
I know there's a lot of oversight with it, too. It's a pretty robust state agency.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, it looks like there's a lot of state review already happening, and also, a lot of the questions I had was, were already deliberated on by the Board of Zoning Appeals as well, so I don't, I would just reinforce that, but they've already rendered their decision. My final question is just kind of, just a general flow of students and professionals there. I heard that two additional full-time staff would be hired if this is expanded. Would there be any additional part-time staff that would?
No, just two additional. There's eighteen part-time staff, and right now, there's eleven full-time staff, so these eight additional children are only going to require two more full-time staff personnel.
So, that would bring it up to thirteen full-time and eighteen part-time staff. And with the students in attendance there, are they there all day from the six-thirty a.m. to the?
No. The, depending upon the child's parent's schedule, the kids get dropped off between six-thirty a.m. and ten a.m., depending upon when the parent's got to go to work or whatever it is. That same child may get picked up at three o'clock in the, maybe get dropped off at ten and picked up at three o'clock in the afternoon if the parent gets out early. On the other hand, a kid that gets dropped off at six-thirty in the morning may not get picked up until five-thirty in the afternoon. So, it fluctuates depending upon the needs of the individual family.
Okay, so, outside of the drop-off variances, all the students are there between ten to three definitively, and then varies per?
That's right.
Per pickup time, which is not uncommon for a daycare facility. I also just want to say that it's these sorts of businesses, whether it's for-profit or not-for-profit, that add additional value to the town, to the education system. It's not just a town responsibility, but it's also nonprofits and these sorts of businesses that, that make neighborhoods frankly what they are. So, I just want to applaud them for looking at growth and expansion of what they're trying to do.
This has been a great facility in Stratford for decades, as I said, since nineteen sixty-four.
Ms. Peppin has a question.
I would just like to make a comment. I agree with Commissioner Fuller in that in this day and age, we all need daycare, and this facility has been here and has been doing a great job, and now they just want to expand. They don't want to stick a hundred more kids in there.
Right.
They want to make it exactly what our parent, or the parents need these children to be into and what situation they need to be in.
There's only going to be eight new children coming to the facility, but all eighty-four of them will benefit by the new interior flow and space that's available.
Thank you.
Mr. Giuliano, any questions or comments? Mr. Rikuskus?
No, thanks.
I can just echo what everyone else says. It sounds like a very good project, and I'm very proud that you're able to expand and that it looks like it's working well, and it'll service the community better, so I agree. At this point, I'm going to open it up to questions unless there's any other questions from the Commissioners. I know there's a number of people here, you're welcome to speak. Would anybody like to come forward and speak on behalf or in favor of this application? Thank you.
I would just like to say ABC is a great facility.
I just need your name and address.
Keisha Evans, forty-five forty-two Drive, Toma, Connecticut. And children, they are our future and they are tomorrow, so it's great that I can stand behind such a great school, so thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Keisha Davis, I think she said. Okay. Anybody else would like to come forward in support of this application? Please, you're welcome to come forward, and I'm sure the applicant would be appreciative.
My name's Emery Zerenda. I'm actually the director at ABC, and I just want to say this, I think this is going to be a great expansion for our facility for the children. It's going to give us the added space that we need to make. It's always had a rich history. It's going to give us even better future. And what I like most about the expansion is it's not, we're not just expanding to put as many kids as we can. It's really to give the kids more space and a better environment, and I think that's and I think there's many pros to it, and it would be great for our community.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of the application?
Hi, guys. I just wanted to say that my daughter went there twenty years ago, and my granddaughter's there now, and-
I just need your name and address.
Amy Hoffman, 50 Birdseye Street in Stratford. Where, I'm sorry? And this is just for her-
One sec, we couldn't- Before you go-
Could you say that again, please, your name? Amy Hoffman, 50 Birdseye Street in Stratford.
Okay.
So my daughter went there twenty years ago, my granddaughter's there now, and it's just a really great facility, so it's just all about the children there, and we're very, very proud of it. So I'm just glad you guys are on board.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to add and speak in favor? Okay, anybody want to speak in opposition to this application or oppose? You're the attorney, you always get to speak.
I look old enough to be a grandfather. That woman does look old enough to be a grandmother, though.
I thought of that, too. Fortunate. Okay. Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to this application? Anybody opposed? Anybody want to make a comment? Yes, please.
Good evening. My name is Lucy Newell. I'm one of the residents behind ABC Nursery, and I'm not in opposition. I just have some concerns. I thank you for the time that you're taking this evening to go over everything. And on the original time, when I was here in February 7th, we had requested some additions to the security in the back of the parking lot, so I'm just asking for an additional fencing in the back for the residents that are behind on North Abram Street, I'm sorry.
445 Abram?
445, 455, and 475 already has a fence that Ricky, Mr. Pantano, has installed.
Okay, so you're saying that the properties for 455 and 445, you're requesting if they could add a fence?
455 is the one directly behind this new-
Addition.
-and parking lot, and it's getting new bushes, but there is an existing fence right now, a wooden fence and a page fence, and the wooden fence is quite old, and we just like a new fence put up.
A replacement fence?
Yes.
Okay. And would that also cover the corner? Because your property is just off to the corner.
I'm on the corner, correct.
So you would, your corner?
My neighbor, myself and my neighbor have a fence-
That's, so that right angle would include you as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to comment? Anybody else? Mr. Nott?
There are two fences in the area that that young lady was talking about. One is a page fence, and then immediately adjacent to the page fence, there are two stockade fences. I don't believe that those fences are on our property. It's not necessary to add a third fence. I mean, there's two fences, there's a stock- there's a page and a stockade right next to the page. So that, the eight-foot arborvitae should be sufficient, that's all.
Before you leave, because there isn't clarity of whose responsibility and the applicant, the other property owner, isn't here to really speak to it, will you be willing to work with the applicant, with the speaker to find out who the ownership is? Because if it's not on your property, certainly you can't be responsible, but if it is, it is something that she's asked to have addressed.
Well, if the fences are not on our property, then we wouldn't be responsible for it.
Great, that's what I'm saying.
If they are on our property, then fencing already exists, is what I'm saying. There's already two fences there now.
Which fence? She's asking for the stockade fence, if I understood her correctly, to be removed or replaced. Is it in disrepair?
There are two sections of it. I don't know. You recall, why don't you address the issue?
Yes, there is a stockade fence that's in disrepair. There's one section that's off. And then there's a page fence behind that, and that's fine. I don't know whose that belongs to.
Does the page, does the stockade fence belong to you?
I don't know. This is the property that I purchased through foreclosure.
The house.
The house, the White House.
So we don't know who that stockade fence belongs to?
No.
Well, it still needs to be resolved. You need to have that. Mr. Fuller?
I think we could stipulate, if it's proven that that fence is their fence, we could put in a stipulation-
We can put a stipulation.
-that they repair it.
I know, I'm aware of that. Ms. Newell, are you still here? Ms. Newell? Is it Newell, Lucy Newell? Could you come forward, please? Mr. Nott, just hold on for a second. Ms. Newell, could you come forward? There's a little confusion on our part. Can you help with explaining which fence you're talking about so that we can get some clarity?
I don't have pictures. There is a page fence in the back.
Are you talking about the paid fence or the stockade fence?
That is not the angle. Oh, I'm sorry. Here's my property here, along here.
Okay.
There is a page fence and a wooden fence. Years ago, the owner of this home, I've been there for thirty-six years in that home, and the people behind, that's not even the owner, they're new. The residents of this home back then put that fence up. I don't know if it is the property line. Ricky will find out if the property line is. We're just, for security reasons, asking for- he already has a white fence along here, a lovely white fence, and we were just asking for it to be added to there.
You drive all the way into the driveway, all the way to the end? This is the property line?
Right. Yeah, we understand. So you're asking for the same white fence to be extended? Because the fence, the stockade fence that's there is in disrepair. What about the second fence?
The page fence?
Yes, the page fence.
I didn't get to look at it that closely.
Is that sufficient, is what we're asking?
Not really. The residents in that house behind are concerned of people going through the bushes, not that we're looking for trouble, but we think a larger fence would just-
Okay.
-deter.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Peppin?
I have a question. I would think that the state, when they come to look at the facility, would make sure that it's enclosed, or not?
I don't know. Mr. Paul?
I would just think that the, I brought up security earlier because, you know, most schools have fencing, and some of the daycares that I've been to have fencing, and it's really for security. I would think the owner of this daycare, we want to make sure the kids are secure as possible, so he would give that a hard look to make sure it is secure, and the fencing may do it for him.
I think we'll discuss it. From what I understand, there is some confusion over the ownership of the fence, which we may make a stipulation. Number two, the, there are two fences there, a page fence and a stockade fence. There seems to be agreement that there's, the stockade fence is in disrepair and needs to come down. The question is whether or not the white fence that already exists there can be extended, so we'll discuss that. Mr. Nott? Where did he go? Does your applicant have any problem with replacing the fence or taking down the fence as needed to address the neighbor's concern?
Well, we don't have any problem with removing the stockade fence. The page fence, however, is functional. The page, there's nothing wrong with the page fence, it's just old. The stockade fence, if you look in photograph number seven, you can see that the page fence is still functional.
Okay. Give me a second. Oh, you got it faster. Yeah, it does look pretty beaten. Okay.
That was the purpose that the BZA insisted on the eight-foot arborvitae was to resolve this issue.
Any questions? Mr. Rikuskus?
Yeah, one last question, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. I'm looking at exhibit seven, and this is to the house that was acquired by ABC. As you could see, there's fence falling apart, being held up by the metal fence. Would you be, presuming that this is your fence, the property fence, would you be open to replacing, repairing, and otherwise just fixing this up? Because it does look pretty bad.
Are you talking about the page fence, Dave?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's fallen apart.
I see the stockade fence falling apart. I don't see the page fence falling apart in number seven.
It's the chain-link fence. Yeah, we, it looks old and battered. All right, folks, I'm going to move on. We can discuss this in the ad.
Well, we're talking about security, and- What about this fence here? All right, what he's saying is, this picture number seven was taken from the existing ABC backyard that's got the astroturf in it, looking into the backyard of the house next door. So the fence that is shown in this picture that goes from left to right, and the stockade fence on the other side of it, and those trees are all coming out of there, because the whole, that's going to become part of the parking lot. If you look way to the left, where there's like a red, a red building back there, there's a stockade fence showing, running across the back of that property next door. That's the stockade fence and the page fence that currently exists that's going to stay. That runs across the back of our property. And the fence to the right that runs diagonally across the lower right of the picture is coming out of there also. That, that's up towards the street.
What I sense from the commissioners, and we'll be able to talk about it more, is that there's an interest for the stockade fence to come down, the one that you mentioned in the back, for the, where the red houses, all of the stockade fence to come down. And there seems to be an interest in extending the white fence that you put up on the first part of your property continuously. The question is, assuming that it's on your property, because we don't seem to know for sure, but assuming that it is, would you be willing to do that?
Across the back of the property only, not all the way down the right-hand side.
I'm not sure when you say all the way down the right-hand side. What I'm saying is, when I look at this, I'm talking about through, through the back there.
You look at exhibit 10.
That's what I'm looking at. Right now you have some trees, and you're going to put a watery pension.
He'll extend the white vinyl fence across the back of the property, which is whole. But he does not want to put the fence along the right side of the property where the arborvitae are. That's not necessary.
Okay. Understood.
No, not that side. We're not doing anything on the left side. There is a white fence along the left side of the back. He's willing to extend that white fence across the right side of the back, where the arborvitae is shown.
So it would separate the properties of 455 and probably a little bit of 445?
Yes. Right.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? I would like to motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing on 2720 and 2740, Broadridge Avenue.
By Ms. Peppin, second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And we have the last application for the evening, 570 Success. Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Petition number four on the agenda, 570 Success Avenue, petition of Mr. Curran seeking special case approval to establish a new ice cream shop in a C.A. district.
Mr. Fuller, hold up a second. Folks, we're trying to move forward, if you could, as quietly as possible. Thank you. I apologize, Mr. Fuller, please continue.
I'll read it again for record. Agenda item number four on the public hearing agenda, 570 Success Avenue, petition of Mr. Sean Curran seeking a special case approval to establish a new ice cream shop in a C.A. district.
Thank you very much. And the applicant, please, your name and introduce yourself.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Sean Curran.
Mr. Curran, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for hearing my petition. I don't know what to say, but ask away. It's going to be a small mom-and-pop ice cream shop located at, actually, the address is going to be 564, it's in the 570 building, but it's 564 Sixus Avenue. Just a little mom-and-pop ice cream shop, hard soft ice cream. Plenty of parking in the back.
I understand it was a hairdresser location. So you're just changing the, it's just a change of use? No changes in dimensions, footprint or anything of that nature?
The size of the building, the size of the space stays the same.
Okay.
There's no, there's not going to be any indoor seating, so it's just a in-and-out.
Take out. Any questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Fuller?
Thank you. Two questions. First, with the 564 address, is that what, is that what the current lot is addressed now, 564 Success?
I believe the building's 570. There's several addresses there, but the space that we're going to acquire is 564, it's all the way to the right.
So the hair salon was 564, and this proposed ice cream parlor will still be 564?
Yes, sir.
But the overall building is 570?
I believe so.
Is that, does that pose any sort of legal questions about what address is in? Okay, perfect, I just wanted to make sure that all that was taken care of. My other question is just your, what are your hours of operation?
I would say right now we're thinking like 10 to 10, 10 a.m. to 10 p.m.
Okay, perfect, that's pretty much all the questions I have, Madam Chair.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Would you be operating this twelve months out of the year, all year round?
It's going to depend on-
The weather?
The business, the weather. If we can stay open twelve months a year, we plan to do so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Peppin? Mr. Giuliano?
I'm good.
Mr. Rikuskus? I don't really have any questions, other than there's a requirement that you were supposed to bring some ice cream with you.
Yeah, not yet, ma'am, but soon, I hope.
Thank you very much. At this point, what I'm going to do is open it up to the public to see if they have any comments. If anybody would like to come forward in favor of this application, please come forward now. Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed to this application, please come forward now? Or even a comment, you're welcome to come forward at this point.
Do they need certificates of mailings for this?
Yes, they do. Did you, I'm sorry, Mr. Curran, did you supply the certificates of mailing?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh.
Mails out to-
Do you have the receipts?
I do not. I was told, as long as they were mailed, that was, I have one, two, three, four, four letters that went out.
Okay. Yeah, let's take a look at that.
Yeah, on the application, you can walk through. On the application, it says that the instructions about how the letters do need to be sent.
By the way, while he's looking at that, I just want to point out that this is one of the applications that we normally would have not had a, would appear before the zoning commission under the new regulations once that is passed. It would have gone directly to the zoning administrator to make those approvals. approvals.
So, I mean, I'll just explain this to the commissioners here. We have, the applicant did come to our office. We have our staff's handwriting on here explaining that these are the property owners that need to be notified. We do have the template letter. However, we do not have verification that this letter was actually sent to the abutting property owners. I think it's within your discretion to decide whether or not notice has been, has been...
Properly noticed.
Properly noticed. The bare minimum for something to be properly noticed is an advertisement in the newspaper and a posting of the property. We do that currently, the town does that. We go actually above and beyond. Our application requests that abutting property owners be notified. This is not legally required, it's just something that we do as a process, as a process. So, if you decided to accept it, the application, in my opinion, and I think the town attorney might want, could speak on it as well, would not be fatally flawed in any way. If you approve it, yes or no?
Would it be in our purview to ask for those receipts? I'm assuming, do you have the receipts at home at all?
I don't have any receipts. I just put the letters in the envelope and mailed them out.
Put a stamp on it and send it out.
That's it, ma'am.
Mr. Fuller?
Well, I agree with Jay that the requirement that the abutting owners be personally notified is really over and above what the statutory requirement is. As long as the application was posted, then that satisfies the notice requirements under the statute.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? Mr. Fuller?
We also might see in public hearing that adjoining property owners might enter comment as well. We had this situation at one hearing before where someone didn't have a certified letter, but they attended the hearing, so therefore they were duly notified.
Mr. Vansky?
My only suggestion is that if the alternative is to postpone the hearing for the applicant to come back next month to submit his certificates of mailing. Those are the two alternatives, the one I gave before.
Well, how about this as a third? Is that we could consider approval pending certificates of mailing, which would require the applicant to send out with receipts, a certificate of mailing, pending those receipts in a period of time of no comment, that approval could go forward. Mr. Fuller? He didn't like that one.
That's a little...
Little stretch.
Yeah, unclean. If you ever got into a, an issue of, you know, what if they, what if three notices came back and not four?
Okay. I think we just split the baby enough.
Yeah.
We'll make a decision of what we have right now.
Right.
Okay. Let me ask the questions. Do the commissioners feel comfortable enough to make a decision, or would you prefer the applicant to come back with another certificate of mailing? Mr. Paul?
I'd like to answer that question after we open it up to the public. Maybe somebody's here.
We just did.
Okay. Well...
No one came forward for or against?
I would be comfortable if we did something subject to follow-up from our planning administration. Maybe they can make a follow-up contact with some of these neighbors?
I think we just said, it doesn't really do anything and we just actually made it more complicated. That's what Mr. Florick was...
No.
That's all right, I had to say mine here.
That was my opinion. I mean, I think you have the discretion, as Jay indicated, to determine, based on what you see here, you have the discretion to determine whether the abutting property owners have been personally notified, keeping in mind, again, that that requirement is something that we, we in this town have kind of engrafted upon the statutory requirement. And as long as it's been posted, so that the public in general has been aware, that does satisfy the statute.
Madam Chair, I have a question for Town Attorney Florick?
Yes, please.
Oh, yes, so my, my one concern would be in this situation, the certified mailings to abutting property owners is a town regulation, not a state regulation. But say in the unlikely, I don't imagine this being appealed in some capacity to the court, it seems very unlikely. But let's just say, because it's theoretical, it could happen. Wouldn't the court look at local zoning rules to determine whether process and protocol was followed?
It might, and certainly, under the law, it's, it's, it's not invalid all the time for a town to put more stringent regulations than the statute requires. That's allowable under certain circumstances. Nevertheless, the proposing argument would be, hey, the statute requires posting and that provides notice. So, the zoning commission really doesn't have any ability to impose more rigorous standards than the statute requires. I'm not sure how that, that issue would go if it were appealed.
And then, should the commission take it upon itself to render whatever certified mailings is appropriate, or it's okay to waive them in this case? Should it codify that in some sort of motion?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
I do want to make one comment, and I was looking, tonight, later in our administrative session, we will be looking at a takeout, a revision to our restaurant takeout regulations. And if those regulations had moved forward even a month later, this applicant would not even be coming before us. He would not have to have done a certificate of mailing. He would have gone to the zoning administrator to gotten the permissions and approvals that we have. I'm sensitive to the fact that we need to notify our abutting properties, which in this case, I believe are both businesses, and this is an existing use of the property. I would recommend that we move forward with this application, if possible. I understand the need to be fair and be consistent, but I also don't want personally to mire ourselves and regulations at the disadvantage and hardship of our businesses, particularly our small businesses, knowing that we have a regulation that is going to remove it within another possible month or so.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the certified mailing requirement for this particular petition.
I like that motion, Mr. Fuller. Is there a second by Mr. Paul? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. At this point, I'd like a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing at 570 Success Avenue.
By Ms. Peppin, second by Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mr. Curran. We'll have a decision later tonight.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the public hearing for...
Thank you very much, by Mr. Fuller. Motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I second.
Second by Ms. Peppin. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. I'd like to take a five-minute recess. We can stretch. Thank you. And we'll be back for administrative session.